The regular Ebleth City Council meeting scheduled for 2:00 PM, June 18th will now come to order. Roll call.
Council Rosey.
Here.
Council Koivonen.
Here.
Council Purpich.
Here.
Council Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Vysalovic.
Here. Since we have no items for Item C, we'll move along to Item D, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Do we have any changes or additions? Okay, anybody?
No.
If not, then I'll call for a motion and we approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Which made by Purpich, support by Rosey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no appointments or presentations. Consent agenda. Approval of payroll, May 16th through the 31st. If no one has any questions or additions, I'll call for a motion and we approve the payroll.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Mayor, excuse me, can we go back a minute because I'm also Stephanie and I was somewhere else. When you guys approved the agenda? Could you tell me who made that motion, please?
Purpich. And Rosey seconded it.
Thank you.
Man, you gotta get that shorthand hold there. Then we'll move on to new business. First item, Pay Application 7 from Max Gray Construction, the amount of $244,676.32 for City of Ebleth project.
You know, I'll also move just because they're doing a lot of projects. You know, people don't see it and there's been a lot of stuff going on in all our buildings, so that's what this is all about. Any particular area that are just all over, all the buildings that they're working on?
Library.
Library, Hippodrome. Yeah, those are the ones, right?
Yeah. So we had a motion to pay Application 7, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Rosey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number two. Facilities use agreement between the City of Ebleth and Independent School District, number 2909. That's for city recreation facilities. It's pretty much the same Jerry has.
Yeah, this will be, this includes two boys hockey games and two girls hockey games and some practice time.
Oh, okay.
And the golf course?
The golf course is included, the south side ball fields are included in this.
Have we maintained those so that they got the, are those the baseball teams that are up there now, you take care of that stuff?
The youth takes care of their own. We bring a material and we do a weekend, but they take care of it.
Have they asked for anything?
This year, no, not yet. No. We brought, we bought agro lime last year for them. And we'll spread it and that type of stuff. We'll do as much work as they want us to do. We do mow the grass and everything up there.
But they have, they have someone that comes to you?
They have a kid that they hire and we help out paying that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Did we get a motion?
Not yet.
Do you still need?
Not yet. Who's killing you?
I'll call for a motion and we accept the facilities use agreement.
So moved.
Which made by Purpich, we have a support.
I guess I'll support.
Support by Koivonen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Proposal from MSA for wastewater treatment facility plan. Jerry, you have?
Yep, we got Tom with MSA here to give a little presentation on what the proposal is all about and new direction we're going with the mandates that we got from the Department of Health, so.
Yeah, I'm Tom Die with MSA Professional Services and process kind of started back in 2019 when the city received a letter from the PCA saying we're going to get a tighter phosphorus limit as well as a reduced mercury limit. But the mercury limit is something that we're currently meeting and really don't have a problem with meeting that. But phosphorus limit is something that we're really not able to meet with the current facility consistently. So we, you know, went through probably, I don't know, it's over a year of negotiation back and forth with PCA and really didn't, didn't get any relief from the proposed limit. And so over the past couple of years, we, MSA did a quick, kind of a quick evaluation of your wastewater plant, some of the processes and the components that do need to be replaced, that are aging, as well as, you know, what do we need to do to meet this limit? And the main thing is to replace the filters or upgrade the filters. And that initial evaluation was kind of a quick study to kind of see what kind of ballpark are we talking here for a total project cost? And it came out to about nine million. And and so since then, the next step really is to do a full facilities plan where you look at the population now. You project it out 20 years, you project your flows and any, you know, possible commercial or industrial facilities that may, you know, connect. And then from that, you, you look at different alternatives. What can we, what are the alternatives we can do to meet these, the new limits? And bring the facility up to, you know, sort of last an additional 20 years. Usually a facility plan, the planning period is a 20-year period, so. And as part of that facility plan too, the result will be, here's the recommendations of what we need to do in order to meet that limit and upgrade the facility. So, and the deadline for meeting the new limit is March 31st of 2029. So there is some time, yes, but, you know, from starting the facility plan to the time you get operational, used to be three years. Right now, they're still experiencing long lead times for things like motor control centers, electrical components. They can still be 40 to 48 weeks delivery time after the contractor gets the purchase order out. So we're, we've been allowing two years for construction anymore simply because we're still seeing long lead times for some of these items, but. So what the facility plan does is, the main thing it does is, it gets you in line for funding. It's a required study. The PCA requires it in order for you to qualify for any kind of state funding. And that can include grant funding, which there is a grant program called the Point Source Implementation Grant, which we will qualify because we are getting these tighter limits, so. And also what will happen is we'll list the project on the project priority list. The PCA keeps a list of all of the projects that are upcoming and they rank them. You get points for, because you're getting a new limit, you get points for your age of your facility, if it's over 20 years old and the last major upgrade, I believe, was 2004. So you get points for that and the more points you get, the better, your project score is better. You're more likely to get those grant funds because there's a limited amount of grant funds every year. And the higher you are on the list, the more likely you're going to get some, so. And our, my kind of personal approach to a facility plan is to include everything. It might be a wish, it might be kind of a dream, but let's get it in there. Because if you decide that, yeah, we want to do it and it's not in there, we got to go back and make an amendment. If it's in there and you decide you don't want to do it, no big deal. The PCA just wants to make sure that your facility will meet this limit, you know, and be good to go for the next 20 years, so. So that's generally my approach is, is to get these things in here that, you know, not all of them are critical and necessary, but, you know, it's, it's, that way it's in the facility plan. And no matter what you put in here, the city is not committed to doing anything, even when this has been submitted and approved. You're not committed to doing what's in here. But what you are, the city has to commit to is meeting that limit by 2029, so. This is really just the next step in the process. It kind of starts the, the whole phases of planning, design, construction, and then implementation or just putting it into operation, so. And this is the point where you really get, quote, more bang for your buck. The cost of this is usually ends up being about less than 1% of the total project cost. But this is the point where you can decide kind of some of the direction you want to go. And like, see, get kind of more bang for your buck. The further you get down the line, the harder it is to kind of make changes as we get into design and that, so. And we'll be working closely with the operations staff and Jerry on this facility plan as we go forward and, you know, one of the components at the end is to do a public hearing. And in that public hearing, we will present, here's the projected impact on rates. And we can present different scenarios. Say, if we get $2 million in grant, here's the impact on rates. If we get $4 million, here's the impact on rates. So we can present those different scenarios to the public. As well as we can give updates and presentation to the city council as well as we go, if desired. But yeah, the main purpose of this whole facility plan is to qualify us for state funding. So yeah, if you want me to cover anything else?
No, I think that's good unless they have questions.
Anybody else have any questions for Tom on this? Because I know when we had the, you see, negotiations for a year, we're going back and forth because we questioned, I did, the old age of the data they were using. You're talking early 90s.
Yeah.
Because when they re, we did that first major upgrade, the MPC walked that creek from the plant all the way to the lake and they had some real accurate information. But they don't do that apparently anymore. I said, so they had some good comments and different things they discovered, but.
Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of doing a total upgrade, of course. Especially when you consider the things that we are planning for the City of Ebleth. We've got the lots up on Praga's Parkway that we're going to be, you know, sending out. And our school properties now with homes and hopefully, we're going to get people up here. Hopefully in the near future, there'll be more families coming in and utilizing our schools, our new school. So I, I don't think we, you know, we're not meeting the, the goals now of the PCA. Let's go out and hit them.
Well, if you got a plan, a proposal, then you're getting in front of everything. You know, it's not, you don't want to wait till you're behind and you're in a real jam and giving us limitations and threatening letters, but do we have to take official action?
Please.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Call for a motion that we initiate, initiate this proposal. Motion made by Rosey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Tom, for your input.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice work up on you. Thank you.
Item number four, renewal for 2:00 AM license for R&amp;M Woods Incorporated at Johnny D's. Anybody have any questions? If not, call for motion and we approve that 2:00 AM license permit.
So moved.
Which made by Purpich, we have a support. Support by Rosey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item five, letter from Waterbury Woods regarding hosting a classic car show, August 15th. I think they had a pretty nice one last year there.
Yes, they did. Nice to get all those people out and hopefully it'll be a nice day again.
Yeah, because the weather cooperates.
Yeah.
And just call for a motion that we approve this request and they can work with the police department and public works as far as street traffic control.
So moved.
Which made by Purpich, we have a support. Support. Support by Koivonen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item six, resignation from James Ragman Patrol Officer.
Boy, I really hate to see this.
I did too, but he's traveling a distance there.
Yes, he is. He's traveling a distance, but he has been tasked several times to bring the agenda to my house on the, on the weekend and he's been nothing but polite, just a tremendous officer as far as I can see. His letter to you guys, it's pretty neat. Quite an officer. I hate to have to rebuild his position, but he's moving on to, oof, big responsibilities.
Well, I guess, eh? That's really a transition. Go from Ebleth to there. Yeah.
Wow. Wow. That's amazing.
Well, he was an asset to the force. I worked with him several times on calls. He's everything that you guys said he was and I'm sorry to see him go before I could have fed him some crappies. He goes, "What's a crappie?"
Well, if you don't work out down there, tell him, maybe you can find a home for him again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else?
You gonna open up again? That'll be the next one.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? A call for motion that we accept the resignation of Officer Ragland?
So moved.
Which made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, request to fill vacant patrol officer position. Well, that's kind of a, a no-brainer. I'm just wondering, it seems like we always got a turn. Maybe we should go for one more because it seems like, you know, everybody's poaching from all the departments. Maybe stay one ahead of the game? Because if you're over budget one for four or five months, I don't think that'd hurt. Because then you're going back again.
Well, we're down, we're down one already anyway.
Yeah, we got one eye injury because we're down for the rest of your half and then James.
Then we should post for two.
Let's see what we can get.
I would have to support that because, you know, we need to get out of the curve with today's market. There's no availability and everybody and their brother or every law enforcement agency is looking for help.
Yeah. Well, our incentives are still in place, right? Didn't we, didn't we have some incentives?
Yeah.
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 Well, this last one, look where he went, you know? That's a long ways away. It's not going to the sheriff's side, if it throws something like that, you know?
Have the usual safety offers.
Yeah. Well, we should, we should at least go for two then. I was thinking maybe a third because it seems like we always got turnover with the, everybody moving. I think we should go for at least two.
Yeah, at least two.
And see what we get for applications. And if you do get.
We get three, then we.
If you get some others that look like they might be good, maybe bring aboard an extra one because it seems like every year we're doing this once or twice.
Let's, let's see what's out there.
Well, I'll call for a motion, authorize the chief to fill the vacant patrol officer positions.
So moved.
Which made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koivonen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number eight, resignation from Chief Lindy from the Ebleth, Virginia Airport Authority.
Absolutely not. Well, you know, I just hate to, you know, I understand your predicament.
Yeah.
But I could have sworn a while back ago, we, we talked about it and if you couldn't, I thought we brought up Jerry's name. So, you know, I, I was positive he was the second in command. So I don't know what you just wanted to go over. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Well, I don't have time either.
Well, here we go. Well, you know, Virginia hasn't been able to fill that empty slot. It's just, you know, members from the council. I don't know if there's any priority because we all seem to make it there for it. Just leave it ride like it is. You got me and you, Joe, and. Yeah, that's fine. We're from Virginia. Just let her go.
Finish, she develops later, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah.
And I'm just an alternate, Jerry, so don't keep throwing my. Alternating me, slide right in. See, I don't know how that works, but I don't think we could have three of us under.
No.
No. No, so you can only have two and then.
It would have to be Jerry.
It would have to be Jerry.
Oh, I can't believe I just said that.
Who else could, who else could you draft?
Hey, we all make the motion to accept.
All right. Motion accepted by Rosey and we have a support.
Reluctantly, I suppose.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number nine, Leonidus Overlook recommendation to award letter. That's one that's been a little while in company.
It has because the cost came in significantly over budget. So Zo from Woodset worked with the low bidder and they have found a way to shave off some deductions. And the deductions aren't going to cause any material differences in what we're going to see in the functionality.
They're thinning the specs a little.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. Thinning the specs, okay?
Thinning the specs.
Yeah, and the contractor has indicated that he still intends to finish the project this year.
Oh, right.
So at the next meeting, if you accept this low bidder, then there'll be the change order to deduct and then a change order to extend the completions. And the contractor's been really reasonable to work with according to Zo and Woodset. That's, you know, half the battle is having somebody really walk it up, so.
And we put money away for this, didn't we?
So we, yes. So we're the lodging packs collector and so we get a portion of the collection every month that it goes, sets aside in a fund. And then we have an IRRB grant, a small grant from the tourism bureau and a Pipercliff's grant.
I thought so. I'm just trying to remember how.
It's a good thing for us to put that money. We will always put it back into the community. The last time we did the hockey plaza project and all the graphics, so this time hopefully on to the overlook. So I think everybody appreciates that we just don't put that money in our general fund.
Yeah, absolutely.
That we reinvest back into the community.
Yeah, that's what it's about.
That's one of the few mind overlooks really at this end of the range.
Correct.
It has a spectacular view and you can see a lot of the range from their. Well, you know, there's a lot of, lot of feedback on, on media about coming to Ebleth. Just about to the hockey hall fans and the big stick. And then if we can get them to go out to Leonidus Overlook. And hell, a lot of them want to go up and drive by the new school, you know, I mean. You know, so as long as we get the people coming this way.
Because I've taken a lot of them up on overlook, a lot of media people, and they're just fascinated by what they can see.
You know, I go up there every now and then and I'm, I always run into people up there, not just people, you know, any tourists and stuff like that. They like to look from up there. You can see pretty far.
There's no further discussion. A call for a motion that we approve this recommendation to award this bid. Motion made by Rosey, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, we have any updates from any of the commission meetings or award meetings anybody's on?
Daycare meeting tomorrow, Thursday.
Anything new going on up there, John?
Still dealing with the tourist shoe. The daycare center, they've repurposed some space there.
Oh, okay.
So now there's like a, it's not up and running yet, but they moved stuff around so they can establish some daycare for the residents and for surrounding community. You know, it's, it's well needed as far as that's concerned. As far as other developments, no, just the tourist shoe's still being negotiated. Other than that, status quo.
Yeah, because we had nothing other than the airport that thing, Joel, and that's flipping along pretty good. They've been really selling a lot of fuel lately. Those medical helicopters are going constantly. They had three of them fueling up there a while back because of the congestion, one of the other airports, so. That's working out pretty good. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
How's that trailer living?
I'm sorry.
I bet you.
When you move in?
I have no idea how many weeks I think I was there, so. They're making progress in there anyways. Someone's helping backward.
Yeah, yeah.
Jerry, you got anything to add?
I was just going to mention to you, the Fail Pond project again was put on hold. They brought some equipment down there. They were going to start and then it started raining and got flooded out and now it's been wet ever since, so it's going to be a while before everything dries up and they can get in there and do that job, but.
That's what I thought about. We got this rainstorm again.
So back this up again. Not happy about it, but not much we can do.
No, not much at all. Alan's not here. Jack, you got anything to add? Joel, you got anything?
Only mayor that it's very good to be sitting here and not have him. Fan, fantastic. That's it. Nothing else.
Moving forward.
Or a garbage can. We'll take that name off the garbage can that was on there.
Chinese water culture.
Anybody else from the council have anything to add? If not, anyone from the audience? Yeah, Paulie, yes.
I just have a question. I mean, can you get clarification is a order? At our last board meeting, we talked about the letter that the city council sent about wanting that multi-purpose complex. And we had some discussion and then Superintendent Schmidt said that he's expecting another letter from the city council that he was supposedly going to go back and check some figures and costs and then send another final, we are interested in the, in the buildings or not. And so I think there might be something to do with it. I thought maybe that would be on this agenda today, but it isn't. And we have a meeting on Monday and we'll, we'll be discussing it. And I think the board will be voting whether or not to sell that piece of property to you. Jackie, what do you?
My understanding, I didn't watch the board yet, so I'm not sure what's. My understanding, we're working on an amendment to the purchase agreement. That changes the terms, okay? Of the current purchase agreement to include your desire to keep that facility. So I've seen a draft, it's still in the works. So the minute we have it, we'll pass it by Noel for the school board and you folks, of course. But I don't have the final revision to the purchase agreement.
The cost part, I think that's, that's our issue, how we want to do something. You know, it doesn't have anything to do with the purchase itself. That's just something for us.
That was my understanding because I'm at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and I was at the meeting that two of you were at.
Yeah.
And that was my understanding. You left that you would do the agreement, but now it's.
How far along are we on that, Jackie? Do you know?
I'm going to hope that we have that agreement for your next regular meeting, which is July 2nd. Joel, can you talk to the board?
That is Tuesday, July 2nd.
So whenever we have a blow course, make sure that it gets to the board. But I'm guessing you should approve the first report because they want, they want you to formalize your formal intent.
Yeah, because, yeah, that was more of an internal thing with us, how we wanted to do the heating system modification, things like that we're looking at.
Well, I understand that it's coming up at our Monday board meeting and so the timing is off here.
I guess so, because.
Well, we want the building, period. That's as simple as that.
May I suggest that then, Mayor, you come to Superintendent Schmidt or somebody and see if my, my inclinations were correct or not about, they're still expecting a final. You're going to go back and see if the costs, these other costs for your heating system and to seal out those ends and total cost is something you still want to suggest. Would you talk to Noel and?
Are you afraid that they're going to not approve at this next meeting?
They may not, that's.
Of what purpose would that serve?
So are Greeks by some.
But I mean, wouldn't that be like slugging themselves in the nose?
Yeah, it got.
We weren't, we weren't given, we were not given a deadline as to when we had to have the purchase agreement.
But we're doing the West End.
We had a deadline to tell them if we wanted it or not.
Yeah.
That was the 28th of May. And we made that deadline. And we made that deadline. And then we put in intention to purchase.
I think you asked some more conversation about before.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be really, really upset if that happened.
I don't think it would be in the best interest of the school district to ignore our, our wishes to keep that building. I mean, if we're willing to take the chance and do it, we discussed it here at a meeting that we were willing to take the chance to, we talked to Kraus Anderson, they were in agreement that we could cut off the building, no problem, and it was up to us to make the decision.
Kraus Anderson is really helpful.
Yeah, they were very helpful and they talked to our, talked to our girl about it. So I, I'd, I'd be very disappointed in the school if they decided to not heat at least half of their school district's population.
Well, it's, some of the questions that I've got from one of the members, it's just like, they don't want, because they don't have, didn't get anything, they don't want anybody to have anything. And this is not a free thing. We're buying the building.
We're buying the building.
And putting more money in.
And maintaining the building.
Yeah. Like sower grapes, that's all I see.
I mean, there would, we waited for two years to have someone come in and offer, make an offer to buy those buildings and absolve the school of everything and that never happened. And we rethought it and we think we need that building and I think we do as a city, we need that building and I just think that...
That decision's already been made.
Yeah. Jack, you think you could reinforce them?
I will.
You know, that building, once we get it all figured out and going, will fit in with all of the, if we put houses up there, they're going to need a place to go.
I think that's a draw.
Well, yes, because you would have to have a convention center or a place for them to go anyway. We're going to have the hockey, the tennis, the everything there. So if you build a house, your kids can go down there. I mean, it just all fits. And if we can use some of the office space, so be it.
I mean, that may be a good home for the Masabi Orchestra, the band room there.
Well, yeah, I mean...
That is a regular music room there, the way it's set up.
You know, they can do their practicing there and you can have the concerts in the auditorium.
Yeah.
I think it's a win-win.
It'd be ideal. We could put Jerry up in an office and lock him in there.
Possibilities are...
Well, it's just something that can be done.
We just got to get the horse out of the bar now.
Yeah, because that, that's what I took, somebody, you know what I mean? It's, it's not great you guys can use it.
It's a 19-year-old building that was built good.
Well, there's, there's not all the upgrades that you'd have to do to the others than that one, which the engineer said, Kraus Anderson said that one, but, but anything else, Paulie? We'll get in contact with them.
Thanks, Paulie.
You might want to review our board meeting, secure the discussion for yourselves and see if I was correct in my intuition, tie interpretation.
Yeah, because the stuff, whether we wanted the building or not, that wasn't really an issue. It's what we were going to spend on doing different things to it. And like Kraus Anderson said, they would seal the one wall where the walkway is and if we want to do something different there, that's us, you know? They would seal it up so it can be heated, things like that, but...
Any improvements to the building would be done by us, so...
Yeah. Well, anything else, anybody? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.